It's people to come to the floor.
The July twenty-four Almanzt County Planning Board meeting will come to order. I got the role. Have you got it?
Yes, sir. We have unanimous attendance.
Okay.
Thanks.
Everybody had a chance to read the meeting minutes from last month. Any questions, corrections?
Need to approve.
Got a motion and a second all in favor?
Ah.
Both? All right.
You have to tell me.
I do. And they are Mr. Henry Chandler.
My name's Henry Chandler and I live in Burlington, outside of Burlington in Union Ridge Community. Last time I addressed this board regarding minimum lot sizes was in April. I missed the last two meetings, but can see from meeting summaries, there's been a lot of discussion on this topic. Many contractors have addressed this board in opposition to increasing amendment. I understand that as it affects our livelihood and they have every right to bolster your view just as I do. My focus on this subject has always been with the homeowner in the county. It is not about me. I understand that two acre minimum lot size was turned down. So, okay, let's move on. I presented this board in April with photographs of what I define as a condensed development on Highway sixty-two North near McCray. And asked if this is what you want rural Almanzt County to look like, I certainly don't. I recently discovered two homeowners of that development had issues with their septic field caused by physical damage caused by a third party. It became difficult to come up with a solution due to one acre lot size combined with unfavorable topography. However, it was eventually resolved. Do these two homeowners have the ability to repair, make a repair fifteen years from now? No one knows. I'm working on obtaining the public documents to present this board regarding this. My authority to Mr. Chin when it become available. Many points have been made regarding affordability. It's a very tender subject. I read the previous notes where Mr. Vines said whenever land comes up for sale, whoever has the money will buy it. I'm gonna give you two cases in point where multiple acre tracts came up for sale in a half mile where I live several years ago. I considered the price to be unreasonable at that time. But they were quickly bought up by two families that once lived in California because it was a steam. Senior management of the Toyota battery plant likely to be Japanese will feel the same way. Affordability is the national crisis is all over the news. Lee and Almanzt County can't solve that. In March two thousand twenty-three, the proposal was made by a member of this board to increase lot sizes to sixty-five thousand square feet and understand that it's currently being discussed as well as minimum road front minimums. I am completely aligned with that, with this suggestion. It will buy the homeowner with room to make a repair to the septic field and dig a new well if it comes, if it need arises. I had to dig a new well. And you don't move over ten feet, you move hundreds of feet. Some say repairs or replacements will likely never happen. I must suggest to those in that mindset, you should consider canceling your homeowner's insurance provided your home is paid for because the bank won't let you do that. The likelihood of your home burning down or a tornado destroying your home will likely never happen. Why bother with the expense? Building a home on sixty-five thousand square foot lot is the best insurance you can have regarding well and septic tank. It will also provide a good quality of life with inhabitants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Rodney Garrison.
Rodney Garrison, living in the Falls of Township north of Burlington. I spoke at the last meeting and Mr. Chandler, I agree with everything you're saying. I, I, I just, the high density growth has got to be heard if, if we don't do something about that. Where I, where, where I get involved at with well water, as he was speaking of well and septic is after the fact. When we have the potential, and I'm not sure if I'm exactly right over this, of, of a development putting two hundred or more wells on a hundred acre development, I mean, the potential for cost determination, your potential for potential water problems goes way up. It really does. And again, speaking of, if, if you got a small lot, you got nowhere else to go to drill the well. You have to have a variance from the guys here to, to do that. And so, you know, that's my main concern and, 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 and again, the density of it allowed out into the what's supposed to be our rural buffer, our rural areas out there, it's just, it, it doesn't fit with the historic preservation of our county and, and it is not going to leave the legacy for our kids, your kids, grandchildren on down the road. That, that, is that, is that what we want? Is we want a home in every square inch of farmland that comes about? You know, that, that, that's not it. I, I think if we can deter, come curb some of this high density development, our, our, our Almanzt County homeowners can go back to getting more money in their pocket because people are gonna come to them if we can deter the larger groups from coming in here, from out of towns. That's how it was spoken of. And, uh, you know, I, I just really hope that we can come to some kind of, something has to be done if we don't do it now. Again, look at the communities around us. Let's learn from them and what's happened around us to see that, you know, what makes Almanzt County attractive to people to come, the lower taxes, the quality of living? Well, these high density growth areas are, are going to deter that. It's just going to be the same place that people are coming to, to try to get away from. So, uh, you know, I, I, I just hope that we can come to some kind of agreement to see that we need some kind of restriction in place. If we don't do that, we're asking for trouble down the road. And not just for us immediately, but for down the road for our kids and grandkids. Thank you.
Chris Bass, I'm sure y'all tired of seeing me. I'm tired of being here just making all sorts of stuff. Hopefully we'll make a decision, not one way or the other, but this board trusts to make some decision and recommendations for this county. But some of these comments I'm hearing, just like the, I don't think there's no subdivision with two hundred wells on a hundred acres. Last month, the, the stormwater, they were talking about stormwater ponds. Who's gonna maintain the stormwater? Rural subdivisions, ribbon and paint subdivisions don't have stormwater ponds. You got temporary basins, but they come out. And it's not gonna be the county's responsibility to look at that anyway. That's DQ. That's their job. They come out and check us once every two or three weeks sometime. If there's a big rain, they'll come out once a week. So, I just, I, I just wanna, before, I know it's too late for interacting with me. I guess we're past that with maybe some engineers and developers, people on both sides that can, can answer some questions. Cause there are some comments coming out of here that it aren't true on both sides, but I just wanna, I just want a decision made if, if one way or the other, so we'll know what we go up against. I mean, it is, we, I'm from this county. I've been in Hope, in the Hope Valley State Station, I think probably twenty-two, twenty-three years. So, I'm one of these people he's talking about. But I want one acre lots because that's what being, being used to. I don't, I don't do much less than one acre lots. Two acre, two wells on a hundred acres, that's, you know, that's, that's half of what we do. That's not, and I don't think there's a subdivision in Almanzt County that's that dense. If it is, I don't know about it. We do, we do smaller lots in other counties that have well. Davidson's got their own water. And they don't have well. So, I do see smaller lots and I put in hundreds of septic systems a year with very little trouble. You'll get one every now and then, don't get me wrong. And most of the time, most of the time it goes back to something with some water usage or something. But it does happen, but they're very, very, a septic system is very, it works great. It works, it works, you know, they work great. So, maybe it's great. They've been working great for a hundred years. So, just want y'all to, uh, consider this not going up to the two acres. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that concludes our public comments. Anybody got any thing you wanna, yes, ma'am?
I would make a point of clarification on the comment that I made regarding stormwater retention system. It was not in relation to the two acre lot size. It was a general comment about commercial industry or whatever projects that require stormwater retention systems that we don't currently in accounting have a system to, to monitor those or require them to be cleaned or require them to be registered within the county and a variety of different things. It wasn't necessarily two-way residence when it had nothing to do with the two acre law system. So, I want a clarification.
Thank you for the clarification. And also, the, the, the number on a hundred acres, if everything works, it's like a hundred and forty houses, which, which I personally think too much. If it's a, a house of acres, hundred acres, there's two acres would be fifty with a sixty-five thousand foot, which like sixty-eight or seventy houses on a hundred, and we, we, I have used a hundred acres as a generic template for conversation purposes. Obviously it's ten, it's, it's hundred and thirty-three acres, it's more, but so that there's some kind of bar to measure against. And that's, that's something I come up with early on in this conversation, but, but that's, that's where that is. So, is everybody clear on all this? Okay. Well, in that case, we can move to six point one U D O amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, board members, you'll recall that since January, we've been going through the U D O piece by piece, just taking a look at some uh, technical and clerical, legal, uh, clarifications, make sure that we're in line with state law and make sure that the ordinance operates as a cohesive unit. Uh, these were teed up, uh, for the last meeting, six point one and six point two, but obviously the vast majority of the, uh, conversation was around the subdivision proposals. And so you guys made a motion to move these to tonight's meeting. Again, this is simply a draft, which can be debated, changed, talked about, so on and so forth. The, the intent is not to vote on this tonight and to send it up to the commissioners. This is just in a draft stage for your initial consideration. So, I'll just go through the sections here one by one and I'll just start with the, the front page as we've started to reformat these is to kind of have an index page. So, the front page there you'll see as, uh, part one, general regulations with an index for page numbers for all the corresponding sections. Six point one point one was renumbered and the title changed from general to applicability. Six point one point two also renumbered. And we added a clause that would allow the planning staff to determine front side and rear property line, property lines for irregularly shaped lots in order to determine setbacks. So, we get this on an occasion. Uh, a lot of lots are just square, they're rectangular. It's pretty easy to determine front side, rear, whatever the case may be. Occasionally we do get irregularly shaped lots and we have to make a subjective judgment call as to in which directions the setbacks apply. This will provide for a process where lot line disputes can be resolved where currently there is no clear system. We also added a clause clarifying the subdivision setbacks that apply in those instances, uh, would apply where the regulations conflict. So, six point one here is general applicability, but we also have setbacks in the subdivision ordinance. So, this will just clarify that if you're talking about a subdivision, then the setbacks apply in those, in that instance. For section six point one point three, that's simply renumbered. Since we had the section, six point one point four also renumbered. We also removed the reference to North Carolina Administrative Code zero two B point zero two six eight. That provision of the Jordan Lake watershed regulations is actually repealed in two thousand fourteen. So, it just doesn't make sense to have in the ordinance anymore. Six point one five renumbered from six point one point four. And then finally, six point one point six, temporary residences. This section is also renumbered and there are several revisions made, including the numbering of subsections of part B instead of lettering so that the section does not feature double lettering. So, we had V A, V B, and V C. Now, it's, it would be V one, V two, V three. The changes also included a requirement that temporary homes be placed on properties that are either residential in use or vacant. And that temporary residence is not be allowed within mobile home parks or R V parks. We're starting to get a lot of this. Somebody will call and they'll say, I've got a mobile home park and I do a temporary rest, temporary R V or vice versa. The issue with that is you really have conflicting regulations. There's a set of regulations that controls mobile home parks. There's a set of regulations that control temporary R Vs, for example. So, that would allow, it would set up a situation where you have conflicting regulations on the same person. Yes, sir. Did you have a question?
I just wanted to clarify because that was actually my question I had a bit down about that. Say that one more time about the the difference between R V park and a temporary?
Sure. So, uh, the mobile home park ordinance, for example, um, there's an entire ordinance within the U D O that regulates how you set up a mobile hall, the dimension spacing requirements, landscaping, garbage collection, uh, mail kiosks, things of that nature. Those regulations are separate from the temporary residents, right? So, you would just have a situation where you have two competing sets of regulations applying to the same property. And then, and the definition of a mobile home park also says designed for mobile homes. It doesn't say for mobile homes and a R V, right? So, it's just kind of a clarification, a mechanism for clarification so that we don't have overlapping regulations on the same property.
Gotcha.
Uh, we also, in coordination with the environmental health department, changed the rules or proposed to change the rules regarding temporary residences, which are supplemental to existing residences in that they would not have to connect to the well and septic system on the property. However, those types of arrangements would need to sign a consent form for off-site disposal. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, we also seek to clarify and include a provision that details when permits may be reapplied for, and that would be within one year of their expiration. So, as the ordinance reads right now, there's technically no expiration date. Let's say you get a temporary residence permit today and it expires twelve months from now. There's not really any specific legal clarification that says you can't immediately turn right back around and get a new twelve month permit and another one and another one and basically have an indefinite temporary residence. So, this would specifically say, once your permit expires, you have to wait a year before you can apply for another calendar residence. And that's all I've got on six point one. And I'm happy to answer any questions and obviously we'll bring this back up for a secondary review in August.
Oh, number two up there says, um, parcel and suitable for habitation for up to months with the option to permit renewal. Is there a certain number of months that should be there or am I just not reading that correctly?
Where is that?
Number two, used to be V is number two now. If you use a temporary residence based on bona fide literacy, which has made permanent residential dwelling units on a parcel and suitable for habitation for up to months with the, um,
There should be a number there, correct?
There's a twelve in the current ordinance. So, somehow that's all just got taken out. So, yeah, I'll make, make sure that's back in the next month.
So, on the six point one B, uses temporary residence for a period of more than thirty days. So, is this clear enough to say that somebody can't use a travel trailer or R V for twenty-eight days and not use it for ten days and then commute on eight day again?
Yeah, that's a reasonable thought.
I don't know how you would work that.
Yeah. So, so the way we operate right now is let's say somebody does come into the county for up to thirty days, you know, they're staying at a, at a friend's place for a couple of weeks and they're just parked in the driveway or they're camping or whatever the case may be. Uh, we do not require them to get a permit if they're here for less than thirty days. Now, hypothetically, the example you're talking about, they stay for two weeks and they go away and they come back and they go away. I don't know that we have a really good mechanism to monitor that, uh, unless we get a call, a complaint, we specifically go out to property and we've got evidence of somebody being there on a more permanent basis, we could kind of do the code enforcement follow-up on it.
And it, I mean, it may not be an issue and therefore may not be a problem, but.
Yeah, this is thirty days for the receipt of a certificate of occupancy. So, this had to do with there was inhabitable fire, whatever, flood. And then this was out there once they got their C O.
That's right.
Able to move back into it and then that, that is, yeah, then they need this to continue.
That's right. Yeah. So, that's how I. You know, so if your house is engulfed in flames and you're, you need a temporary R V, you rebuild or you remodel, even if it hasn't, the twelve months hasn't expired, you get a certificate of occupancy, you should be out thirty days after that.
Of course. So, in, in two, you're talking about thirty days, you're talking about twelve months with an option of renewal for additional twelve months. But then down here at the bottom, it says issued for one calendar year with no new permit.
Once the permit expires. So, that situation, so that's for a bona fide emergency. House gets struck by lightning, burns up in a fire. Property owners say, we're gonna do a temporary R V, we're gonna rebuild our house. They get a permit, they set out upon rebuilding the house. They're, they're coming up on the twelve month period and they say, you know, we're only about halfway done where we thought we would be. We would like to apply for an additional twelve months. This allows them to do that additional twelve months, but then their permit would expire at the end of that total twenty-four months.
Okay.
For this certificate of occupancy. Once that, in that situation, once the twenty-four months has expired, then they could not renew for another calendar year.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood that.
Excuse my sh- But like I said, I'll bring this back up to just a quick review in August, but if you all have any additional questions or comments, you know. Go for it, Levina. Yes. Part two, adult businesses, sexually oriented businesses. All right. So, again, you've got the, uh, the new cover page there with the index. All right. So, oh, I just want to, uh, make a quick note about the general formatting of the document here. So, you'll see a lot of underlying text and strike through as it relates to numbers. One thing that I'm looking to do, uh, throughout the entire document is if, for example, the ordinance says permit shall expire after one year. Then it would read one spelled out O N E parentheses, the number one, closed parentheses, year. So, there's a lot of that in here, thirty days, thirty parentheses, thirty days. And, and so rather than go through section by section, I just want to make that general comment. All right. Section six point two point one, we added language under the applicability heading that is largely in line with, uh, state law. And that would be North Carolina General Statute one sixty B dash nine oh two. This regulatory language would help serve as the justification for decisions regarding denials or approvals of permits as well as variances and appeals if any should ever arise. Six point two point two, uh, we swapped out the old waiver option for these types of applications for the current variance option now that we actually have a board adjustment. And the variance, uh, criteria there would be directly in line with North Carolina General Statute one sixty B dash seven oh five P. And then finally, under section six point two point three, under subsections A, B, and C, we corrected the reference for appeals from four point two point two, which really deals with ordinance violations to section two point three point one B, which is what enables the board of adjustment to adjudicate appeals. And finally, under subsection F, we corrected the reference from section five point five, four, three point three to read six point two point three. And in subsection G, we corrected the reference from five point three point three to read six point two point two B. I know that's a lot of numbers, but what it really boils down to is there is no article five in this ordinance. Article five was reserved for snow camp zoning that never came to pass. So, I don't know why this ordinance referenced an article five, but it just doesn't exist. So, this just corrects the reference to the proper sections of the and that's all that I got on article six, part two.
I never knew we had that level of detail.
Are you guys, you guys doing this, these changes in Microsoft Word or are you using like Munich code or something like that or? No, just Microsoft Word. Yeah, that's a lot of details to catch. Any other questions on sexually oriented business? And I'll say too, we've never, since I've been here, since October, we've never even gotten a call to establish a sexually oriented businesses, business. This is the type of ordinance that is rarely used, rarely referenced and, and all the rest. But I will say that with, with regards to applicability, so, um, as you go down in the enabling legislation that, that gives local governments the authority to regulate these types of things, that section of general statutes talks about criminal behavior that comes with these types of businesses, uh, uh, possible transmission, sexual or sexual, uh, diseases, um, underage drinking, things without an act. So, from a legal perspective, it's good to, to stand on that legal foundation so that if you deny a permit or, uh, you get in a situation where, uh, you have a denial and an appeal, there's a legal framework by which you made that decision more than just simply saying, these rules apply in our county. It's like, why does the county institute these rules and what's the legal foundation by which we use to make these judgment calls? So, under applicability there, you got a, a new paragraph. And like you said, that's largely just in line with state law to make sure they're on firm legal foundation for that.
Depending on perspective in years past and we, most everybody here probably old enough to remember this, not all of it, but most of us, there were some of these here and I, for my time here, but my guess is they're the reason that this verbiage is in here now.
Right.
Because they had to reinvent the wheel and deal with it. Now, that's what it's you the oldest one here, Henry, what I said right?
It's a complicated.
And that would be a right space.
There was a lot of issues that was going on. In that sort of intensity. And it had nothing, there was no team. For the sheriff to do it. That's, that was game.
So does this need to point to the statute that defines? Specific anatomical areas?
Um, I don't know that we need a statutory reference in there, but if you look in the uh.
I mean, there is statutory reference.
Right, if you look at the um, in the definitions of the U D O, I think there's a definition for specific anatomical areas and I would, I'd be surprised if it's not verbatim. What's, it's in the general statute, yeah.
And a lot of these establishments have funded him to get really, get this wrong, is right?
Sure, sure. Yes. Yeah, that's definitely something that uh, we'll find too if we need to when we get to article seven and have you looked at the definitions. But yeah, you, that's pretty common, like the flood zone. Ordinance, for example, that I've started to kind of compare for the August meeting, there's a ton of definitions in there and as I've gone through, I have found that basically they're all in article seven and article U D O. So that's good. That's a good thing. As long as they're not redundant, I don't think you can have too many definitions, because you never know what situation might come up where you'll be. Clarified, right? Like the definition of subdivision, for example. Yep. Yeah, anyway, so like I said, that's all I've got for now.
Everybody clear on that?
Well, I guess that puts in a new business.
That's right, okay. Do you want me to take the lead on this or are you going to defer to you? Alright. So um. You've got also in your agenda packet, some minor modifications to the existing subdivision ordinance. These came in as a request of the planning board chairman's office to say a little bit and then I'll let you uh, add details if you wish. So again, I'll just think before we get into this that the proposed changes that you have before you. Are modifications to the current subdivision ordinance. These are not changes to the draft proposal that we just entertained over the past two or three meetings. They're simply modifications to the current ordinance. So they do not include, for example, a lot of the details on cluster subdivisions or the option for developers to come before the planning board. To have conditions uh, imposed on developments. They're again just modifications to the current ordinance. But in summary, what they would do is change the thirty thousand square foot lot size minimum. To a new sixty five thousand square foot minimum for new lots which are on well accepted systems. Being for road frontage lot width from the current sixty feet to one hundred and seventy five feet. Change the lot frontage width for lots along a cul-de-sac in twenty feet to only sixty. And add a requirement for lots along the cul-de-sac to have a width of one hundred and seventy five feet at the building site. So that's just the summary and I'll turn it over to you if you want to add any other context like that.
Well, once again, we don't think we're gonna be done with this. There's more work to come, but this is a starting place. And it seemed to me like that the more words we had in it, the more we struggled with it. So the idea was to, as a matter of fact, to get it to a point, either vote on it, do something like Mr. Pau said, or not. And if it's not, then that's that. But if it's yes, and we send this to commissioners and then the real work starts. So that's, that's a basic summation of, of where I sit.
Alright, so um, Matt, we did, so this is. Basically, on the really, is on this revision is. Thirty to sixty five in the road fund. Uh, I kind of like. Let's uh, subsection C, that option could come through. Uh, if something needed to be done to the engineering, I kind of like that option. Is that third option other than standard? I don't know if, if that's something that. Could be brought in, if we wanted to talk more about that or is that this? Complicated situation most. And I'll refer that to the question to the chair.
Well, historically, the more questions we ask, the more confusing it's been. That'd be a great thing to.
I just felt that give the, give the builders an option. Whatever we decide, whatever that number was.
That needs to come in phase two, in my opinion.
You know, the other thing I thought about was here, we, we've got sixty five thousand basically an acre and a half, is that? So uh, then we have the balance of watershed still an a, an acre. I, I would like. To see to bring that up, I'll bring it up there to um, um, the two acres, uh, as a critical watershed. Um, you can't have something that's. A balance of watershed that's less property than a, than the non watershed, in my opinion, that doesn't make sense to me, but. And if I need to make a motion to add that, I would surely be.
The pages are going to be old, you haven't.
That is on. Yeah, we didn't, I didn't think about numbers until after we said.
It's, it's in there somewhere.
I highlighted it. I highlighted my changes. So again.
It's kind of like I think today, there were so many pages in that piece today that it was.
That balance of watershed being at sixty five thousand or bringing it up to the two as the critical watershed, but. I think this, I know fully you can say it would make less than a non. So that's just, you know. And I'm trying to make a motion either way. Right, I'll make a motion to. Change the balance of watershed from one acre to two acres.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to change the balance of watershed from one to two acres.
Question.
Okay, go ahead.
But then we have a critical watershed area that's the same. Usually, if by default, it's more extreme. So would you offer a friendly amendment to increase the critical area to a bit more, since we did change the regular balance?
First, first, um, is that define the, the critical watershed, is that define according to light rules? Or how, where did that come from? How did that come about? So as long as it borrowed from the um, uh, the state guidance on the state model watershed ordinance. Uh, counties do have the discretion to alter the lot size. For uh, watersheds, but I think what we have is pretty much right in line with the lot sizes. For watersheds of that type. Different watersheds have different classifications based on. I'm really not a hundred percent sure exactly what it's based on, but it's that kind of an environmental. Um, analysis of um. Uh, the, the drinking, the intakes to the drinking water source for, for the uh, water bodies and everything. So I think that as it is right now. Is right in line with what the uh, the model ordinance suggests. Just for context, I'll let you know that in my previous jurisdiction, we did have a two acre minimum for the balance and a three acre minimum for the critical area. So that's not how it was.
Right, I think I, I asked the motion maker, would he accept an amendment? Friendly amendment to increase the um. The critical area watershed. By the same difference it is current, so if you use the two to go through.
Okay, then for uh. Let's refer back to the health department and how many, how many lots are permitted to in critical watersheds and balance of watersheds? Do we have just a ballpark? Oh, yeah, ten percent. No. Yeah, how many watershed proposed subdivisions that we get?
Well, I don't know, we don't necessarily sort of buy watershed.
Right.
I don't know if we have really a field to sort of buy watershed. We can pull up gas to show.
Anecdotally, I'd say it's maybe ten percent.
Sounds about right.
It's not affect the whole lot of the developments, any gap.
Well, it doesn't right now because the one acre minimum is so similar to the thirty thousand square foot, so uh. And as it, as we talked about with the data that's come through, a lot of subdivision proposals are acre to two acres anyway, so. Uh, the analysis, the soil analysis is just kind of right in harmony with the watershed. So it's just not, it just hasn't become, since I've seen, it hasn't become a real. Hot topic, controversial, sticky point.
I mean, I, I, I've guessed as high as a quarter, like twenty five percent maybe. Um, but yeah, like I said, like private roads are already on an acre, lot sizes, either from health or, or just because developer wants it that size or. Kind of in, in line with those anyway. And I guess another thing to, to add, I guess with a D Q classification, where it says has four tiers to it, I believe are. Balance and critical just come from grouping those into like the lower two tiers and the upper two tiers or, right? For that.
So then there which?
So D Q adds for, for, for watersheds, um, for stable watersheds, it has two, like four tiers of classification. Our watershed, balanced watershed area and watershed growth area, I believe just came from grouping those into sets of two.
Okay.
We have um, Ian, can you pull up watershed now?
I can try. So I can, I can. I already have. Here's our, our county G I S already. That'll show you. Once it loads again, um.
It looks like it's focused in the northeast area.
It is.
Yes.
Yeah. The most.
It's gonna be Camack and McIntosh.
Yeah.
A little bit down here in the Wisconsin.
I feel like, you know, the majority in the last few years have been in the King Creek in that lower fifty four corner. That we've seen, I feel like.
Yeah, it makes sense. Well, nineteen probably time in that, that area too, that come from that and stuff like that.
I would have seen, we haven't seen a, a lot of. I'll, I would, I would like to rescind my motion. At this particular moment and allow for more discussion whether it should be. And at the minimum of sixty five hundred. For bringing up to two acres. So I'm gonna rescind my motion.
Okay.
Rescind.
So does everybody understand what, what the discussion point is here now? The question is, do we need a differentiation between critical watershed and the balance of watershed? And the thought is, if we don't move the balance to two acres, then the critical should be more than that. Template Caswell County is two and three.
I only have one watershed. Other watersheds have different lot size divisional requirements.
I misunderstood what you said.
In, in, in Caswell, the, the, I think it was the W S two classification watershed had the two acre. In the balance and three in the critical areas, the others in the county had a um. One acre. Balance of two in the group. So that varied depending on the watershed classification. These are just uniform regardless of the classification.
We want to make sure we tell the story correctly.
So again, which levels? Are critical again?
That would be the, the blue here.
Okay, I can't really say that as far as I can, are you saying level two and level?
It's, it's basically your watershed, it's take care of it.
Right, I, I got, so. Some, some areas of watersheds are one.
Just like Camack.
You said two and three were critical?
Let me see. I'm, I'm trying. Are you talking about the different classifications of these watersheds? Okay.
Yeah.
I can help you with that.
Yeah.
Okay, so the Stone Creek watershed in the, in the north and northwestern. Section of the county is a uh, classification W S two.
And that is critical or?
It has a critical area and a balance. The critical area is the immediate half mile adjacent to the water intake points, the high, the high water marks of the deck. Same thing with the Bat Creek watershed, it's also a W S two and that's in the northeastern portion of the county. In the central west, actually, let's just stick with W S twos. Uh, along the Orange County. Line, the King Creek watershed is also a W S two. Then there's a tiny portion of the Hall River watershed in the very northwestern corner of the county. That's a W S four. Big elements creek, just to the west of the village of Owens is also a W S four for Lake McIntosh. And the Rocky River in the southern southwestern portion of the county is also a W S, I'm sorry, that's a W S three. So we have three different classifications of watershed. Drinking water watersheds within the county. And I don't know, um, I would be misleading you if I gave you some sort of a uh, perspective on whether or not. It would be a good policy to have different lot sizes based on the different watershed classifications. My plan was to get there once we get to section six point ten. Which is where you find the watershed or regulations in our ordinance. And part of the reason I wanted to tackle this piece by piece and not. Extend it to the, send it to the commissioners. Without having it holistically addressed holistically. So I don't know if it's wise policy to have differential uh, lot sizes in the different watershed classifications, but I will certainly. Present that to you by the time it comes and get there in the audience, unless you want to take a closer look at it in the next day.
From what I'm seeing on um. I think it's the E Q's website, they have the definitions for the class one, two, and three. So the water, the W S stands for water supply, so that watershed. Uh, conveys drainage to a reservoir that's used for water supply. Basically, it seems like for a watershed one. Those are properties that are in public ownership or located in underdeveloped watersheds. For watershed two. These are generally in predominantly undeveloped watersheds. For three. These W S three waters are generally in low to moderately developed watersheds. So it seems like they classify them based on how dense. The development is within each of those watersheds.
That makes sense.
Um. Initially, I wouldn't see an advantage getting down so specifically that. A class one has a different lot size than class two or three or vice versa.
Yeah.
From what I'm seeing here, I wouldn't think there's a advantage either way. It would definitely make for a simpler chart. And just to keep it as.
Keep it alone, leave it alone.
Yeah. I will say too, that even if the lot size um, doesn't change, there's still, there's still like a uh, required uh, vegetated buffer from the water's edge. Uh, regardless of this time, the, the type of development. So there are additional environmental regulations that apply. To uh, waters that right along the water's edge regardless of whether or not it stays at an acre or two acres where it is. And that's, that's to mitigate the runoff, that's to provide a buffer at the immediate intake source for those uh, drainage water supplies.
Yeah, generally those are fifty foot buffers, broken down into a twenty foot zone and a thirty foot zone.
Right, well, it's still a hundred for us.
Okay.
And so that's going to be part of my homework is to take a look at the most recent model ordinance and see what the state suggests and then. Bring that to you guys for debate, because I think the hundred is pretty outdated. And then bring that to you guys for debate, because I think the, the hundred is pretty outdated. What I've dealt with in the past is a two tiered system with, um. Twenty, the, the, uh, uh, twenty foot undisturbed buffer right at the watersheds and a thirty foot vegetative buffer. I think that's what you're talking about.
Yes.
And then the thirty, the, the forty foot has to be completely disturbed.
Right, you can disturb the thirty if you mitigate it.
Exactly, and you have just grass, shrubs, any kind of natural vegetation, but you can't build it.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
That's what I've seen in the past.
Yeah.
I think it. If we, we stayed at two acres. Water shit, critical watershed. That's, see, that's good, that's. But if we can bring. The balance of the two acres, that evens everything up. Uh. I don't think that it's really necessary that we raise this, this because we have a differential. I think that the, the critical watershed is where it needs to be. The balance of the watershed is not where it needed to be, it should have been up here with the critical watershed. I would say just raise the one to two acres and leave the critical watershed at two acres. That's.
Why would there be a difference here? I mean, what's, what's, what's the reason for the why that there's a difference now? Is there?
Well, when, I think when, when this was, when this was. Uh, fulminating, you know, the, the critical watershed was all about, you know, Lake Dorf rules and the. The, uh, runoff into the Hall River and all this. Uh, with everything that's taking place with, uh, more development. You got more runoff in these areas now. That wasn't there. So it would be, it would, it would be. Best interest to raise this up to two acres, but I think to throw the two acres on the critical watershed would be fine.
So I've got, um. The N C D Q map here as well for the. And you'll see the, these darker areas are what lines up with our watershed, your critical areas, your latter areas as well, is our balance of watershed.
Yep.
Um, I just don't know the exact difference and maybe I have to deal with, um. More impactful streams or high, higher watermark or something like that. Um, but that, I guess, is where we, we've gotten the differential between. Critical and balance.
Yeah, so that the darker shaded areas are simply the land that is immediate to the, uh, actual water body. It serves as, serves as the, the drinking water source. I've got, you, you, and you can see kind of silhouette of a, a lake underneath the shade colors, but if you were to zoom in, you'd see the.
I've got the definitions, if you want me to read those out. So your watershed critical area, the WCA is the area extending either one mile from the normal pool elevation of a water supply reservoir. Or to the ridgeline of the watershed, whichever comes first. Or one mile upstream from the intake located directly in the stream or river. Or the ridgeline of the watershed, whichever comes first. The balance of your watershed is the entire land area contributing surface drainage to a specific point. The public water supply intake minus the watershed critical area. So if your ridgeline, sounds like if your ridgeline is further than a mile upstream of the water body, then after that one mile. If the ridgeline continues, you know, off in the horizon, then that area becomes your balance of the watershed.
Sounds like this could be a whole lot of discussion now.
Yeah.
No offense Henry, but I'm gonna make another motion that. The balance of watershed be brought up to sixty five hundred. Or sixty five thousand to match your new proposal. And we'll leave it at that. So that means any development, whether it's balanced watershed or non. Watershed will be sixty five thousand and then the critical, we'll go with that. That's my motion. Sixty five thousand. Don't raise all the bounds.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion again.
So now we got a motion and a second. Does everybody understand? At this point, all we're changing is the balance of watershed from one acre sixty five thousand feet. So in pure numbers, that's from forty three thousand five hundred and sixty to sixty five thousand. An increase of not quite fifty percent, but all.
So. We, we vote on this, we approve this, this change happens. Then we, then we go on to the, to the next thing or no?
If, if, if we're gonna vote on this. And if it's passed, then it'll be recommended to the county commission.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So, so this, so no matter what happens, we vote yes on this, we get to the lot sizes, so we even still make, we said we're gonna do anything. Then this, this piece changes.
Correct, unless somebody was to come back and make a motion, say this, we ain't doing that, so just don't do nothing.
We don't have to file, so it's correct.
Simply modify the draft before you. Right, just as, this was one that just modified the draft before you, you'll still take a final vote as to whether or not to pass the entire other changes. That's your, is that your question?
I think so, so maybe, maybe just some understanding, so, but just, just play this out here. So we vote on this right now, we move this up to sixty five thousand square feet for the, for the balance of watershed. And then that, that, that's piece is set. Is that my correct, correct?
In the draft.
In the draft. And then we go down to the, to the lot sizes, we have conversation, we come to the end, we say, you know, we can't, we can't come to agree with here. And let's say the thirty thousand square feet. Um, what happens to that piece up there? We just vote on the balance of the watershed at that point?
It falls off, right? If at the end of the night, the entire, this, the changes here are not adopted, then it just.
Okay, so, so the vote we're making right now, just.
Could it's the draft?
Just a draft discussion.
Okay. They just said it's the draft to be voted.
Yeah, it just changes the language that we'll vote on later.
Okay, just, just wanna be sure I understood.
Yeah.
And it was right for that clarification.
Okay.
Now, is any other discussion? Everybody clear on what we're voting on? Want me to restate it?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a motion to change in this draft ordinance. The balance of watershed lot sizes from one acre to sixty five thousand. Everybody clear on that? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Uh.
Opposed? Anybody think we need to call roll here? Okay, now there's that.
We're not going with the, um. But it is not a motion about the non watershed area, is what you're saying?
Not yet. Now. We ready to talk about lots?
Proceed.
Ready to not, we go.
Okay. Non watershed lots. Or lots is us. So in this draft, he's got sixty five thousand square feet for the minimum lot size. Which is a number that Vaughn's been talking about since, uh, three days after Jesus came, is that right?
Wasn't quite that long, but this month would make it about twelve months ago.
Okay. Well, now's the time to talk about it.
Last month, I took these numbers you provided. Did some math with that last month and said, you've got seventy five percent of the lot, seventy four point five percent to be exact. Of the lots approved since twenty nineteen. If you take all this, everything of those seventy five percent and you average it out, the. Average sized lot approved in elements county was seventy thousand five hundred sixty seven. Point two square feet. That's what you've approved. My proposal was sixty five thousand. A year ago, I didn't even know what those numbers were then, but. Now that I know, I still like sixty five thousand, so I make a motion, we vote the sixty five thousand square foot in. As it appears to be the law and the rule of the land over the last five years. That's what we approved, that's what's been approved. Yeah, there's been some larger and there's been some smaller, but on, on average, that's what they are. So that's my motion.
Thank you. So we got a motion and a second. Move the minimum lot size from thirty thousand feet to sixty five thousand.
Yes, minimum lot size, that's my scam, the road front is, or we best just lot size.
Yes, yeah.
For the rest of the.
Let's just change one thing.
One second, yeah.
One, one thing in the pan.
Okay.
There's still just altering the draft, just altering the draft at this point, there's still just altering the draft.
Yes, sir.
I couldn't see it, just notes, but. Not the lot size, he just brought it up, the middle road from, is that seventy five feet or a hundred seventy five feet?
We ain't got there yet.
Okay, okay, I couldn't see it, I'm sorry.
That, that's, that's fine. Okay, so all we're talking about is increasing the lot size. We got a motion and a second. More discussion, Matt.
This is, you know, we talked to you earlier Rodney, but the sixty five thousand square foot is more than. Where I would feel comfortable being, the number that I've had in mind is, is around an acre and a quarter minimum lot size. Um, however, in trying to work together and come up with something that we can. Send the commissioners for, for their review, I have a feeling that we're gonna end up with something that nobody's happy with here. And maybe in the end, that's, that's probably, probably the right place to be at this particular point. Uh, so as much as I am more in favor of something around acre and a quarter, um, I would, I would be inclined to go with fifty five thousand.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I'm not. In favor of the two, of course, and I'm mind is more at one. But. I have the meetings right there in the middle, one point five. So I mean, being happy and being able to live with it, seeing things, I'm inclined to agree.
Well, and like Mr. Palf just has to clarify, and thank you for that. We're only talking about the lot size, this, the road front will come next. So.
So I'm on the other side. Two way. You know, I think it's more than we should be. But I'm willing to compromise to the paper I have, I feel like we have to do something. To defer this road that we're looking at. And. I hope that everybody is, if it's safer than I had, if we can send this thing up as easy as that, I, I would support that. Even though in my heart, I like to say it too.
Anybody else got anything they wanna say?
Well, so it's not a surprise when I do vote. Um, I will say my opinion is to leave it as is. With no changes, no increases, because like you pointed out on the pie chart. The average approved, the, the seventy four and a half percent average lots approved since two thousand nineteen roughly acre and a half. I would be more of the opinion of let the land and the patterns dictate what's being approved and what's going. Rather than actually enforce it in writing somewhere. That's, that's just where I stand, even though I understand the reasoning why going to the acre and a half. My thought is, well, if that's the pattern and that's what's taking place now. I would prefer to lean on that rather than putting something in stone and forcing that decision. That's just my opinion. But I do understand the nature of trying to get. To somewhere that's amenable to, to move forward with.
Okay, Bill, you in favor of this or not?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll be fine with, uh, okay, so let, let's just go back to the, you know, the reasoning. And that we're even talking about this, alright, is that. No zoning, big target on, you know, growth, all this sorts, and that's, and that's great. I mean, it's actually great for the county in, in most areas. You know, um, obviously, we have infrastructure in place for that kind of growth in certain areas. And there's other areas that we don't have infrastructure in. Uh, so I think with that target though, we. We. It surmised that we have to have a management tool to, uh, manage the growth of the county versus the, the amount of. Income the county can intake and then all the other infrastructure that comes with certain facets of develop. And we're talking about residential, I mean, and like I said, a few years ago, and you guys know that we're on the board then. Um. I would have not have guessed what residential costs versus commercial construction, what it actually makes with county. Revenue as a whole, uh, residential costs, commercial provides, right, just in cost and goods and services. We've been through the whole fiasco with the new high school and we're already out of revenue, so we already know we're in, we're in the hole. We're already are raising property taxes, what, ten percent? What was it, eight percent? Eight, okay. And, and if we don't at least try to manage and get our arms around something, so I'm not against. A lot of the proposals that have been talked about over the last year, year and a half or whenever, since, um, the, the smaller plan was. Was, uh, taken off the boards. Okay, so with that being said, I'm fine with an acre and a half, um, that last meeting, I said, you know, I was, I voted for the two acres. I was in favor if I, we went to a, a smaller, then I would like to see some kind of land spacing tool like we used before. Um, but again, this is a stepping stone of what I have a feeling the county will have to address down the road. I'm fine with the acre and a half, uh, right now, um, glad we, if we're gonna, you know, balance watershed, so they all, they all kind of match. I mean, that's great. I guess short answer, yes.
Thank you for that. Henry, yes or no?
I'll, I'll, yes.
Okay, Amy?
Can we like take in the vote?
Yes, we are.
Before we take the official vote, we take.
If you wanna say something, you sure can.
Yeah. I would say, yeah, says exemplifies.
Mr. Barry? Okay, Mr. Pierce? I'm going around the room.
Please, sir.
Okay, Vaughn, yes, okay, Steven.
Is this the power vote?
This is the power vote.
No.
Okay, I've done it backwards last.
Alright, that's not a double check.
Okay. So we're seven to one. Unless you want me to.
I don't think you need to vote, but it's probably a good.
Well, that was my thought, but they tossed me on it last time.
You said it.
Yeah, I just wanted to tie it up. Okay, so I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Just do it on the draft, just on the draft and it's just on the lot size.
Okay. So now, we talked about road front. Yes, ma'am.
I'm over saying what I'm reading, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm twelve. Nonconforming lot of record. Located in knowledge of from not as far as I have a minimum area for you to go from first.
Okay. Where are we at?
Okay. So then.
Just a page up here. Uh, mainly, mainly it would be the size of the lot. So if somebody in nineteen fifteen created a half acre lot, and, but it happens to sit in the watershed. There's not really anything they can do barring some pretty serious measures to increase the size of that lot. And bring it into nonconformity with the current regulations. The, the lot may have been created prior to the adoption of any watershed regulations. So it's a legal nonconformity and there's just legal protection that allows them to develop that lot by right, even if it doesn't conform with the modern regulations.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so we can translate that into layman terms and say, this is not retroactive. If, if, if you've got an approved lot, it's an approved lot.
That's correct. It's only a whole lot of lots nonconformity, but it's not retroactive.
Right. So, so now the, the lot can be sixty feet wide.
Runage.
Runage, so, yeah. And if they're, if they're deep enough, they can.
Oh, okay, I, I follow you now.
Yeah, so, so the idea is to make them wider. At the road. Or in the cul-de-sac wider at the house side.
Right, that's on the other thing.
You need to vote on that?
Well, we can talk about it if we want to vote on it or not.
So this, this one seventy-five road frontage, that's for any, any lot whatsoever that a house did. One house is built on, on, on a piece of property or fifty, that, that one seventy-five is everything, is that, is that correct? Or, or how, how does that break down?
Sounds like everything except the cul-de-sac.
Except a cul-de-sac, excuse me, except a cul-de-sac.
It's a lot.
Okay, so in these conversations, we're talking about subdivisions. Where somebody has taken a parcel of land, we use the generic terms, a farm that has been taken out of agricultural use, converted into cash for the retirement for the last farmer. And then now it's turned into a subdivision. So sometimes the land lays right and you can just build the houses. Driveways go out to existing roads and your now mailing address, what Chandler talked about, thirty-seven fifty-five, highway sixty-two north, thirty-seven fifty-seven, highway sixty-two north, thirty-seven fifty-nine, highway six. And you just, just line them up. And, and the way it reads now, from property pin to property pin is sixty feet. Now, what it does, once it gets off the road, that, that's whatever it is. But if the road frontage is every sixty feet, you've got a, probably if the dirt don't work, maybe ninety feet and maybe a hundred twenty-five feet, maybe whatever it is. But one of the things that Henry brought out when we were talking through this in the committee was purgus surface, managing stolen water. You take a piece of property that's been laying there for however long, in agricultural use, in trees, in whatever. When it rains, the water moves like it moves, it gets in the ground, it's like, does what it does. You go in there, you cut the trees out, build a house on it, and you've got this roof surface. So when it rains, you're containing that water generally running through a gutter and then a pipe and you're, and you're funneling that water and concentrate it to a point. So if you've got a wider lot with a house in the middle of it, that allows that water to manage and get back in the ground a little better. Uh, or get to the deep block, yeah. We, we've all seen in towns where they've got water and sewer and sure enough, putting close together. Got your Goddardane coming over here, you got two houses, maybe more than that. With Dean, you've got to come in there and do some kind of a swell of the ditch for check dams in it or whatever, to control the water and, and get it to where it's a manageable point. Amy was talking about this, about them, them, them ponds, seven ponds. So, so all of that is, it's a, it's about managing the, the water and the more ground is not purgus, the more an issue that comes. Now, now we're not trying to usurp the authority of health department, DEQ, anybody like that right there, but, but a wider lot would allow for more room around the house for that water to get back in the ground rather than having little, what we call postage stamp plots where all the water's right here and it's got to do something. It ends up going in storms.
So my lot right now is a hockey stick. It's thin, it's thin to, thin to, at the, at the front, wide in the back. Eighty-eight feet by measure of G I S correctly from, from practical line, practical line the front of it. Could I build my house on that lot? We can see if this is passed, this is passed.
No.
Okay.
Yes, you can build on a lot if it's existing. If this is passed, you cannot create.
That's what I'm saying, this, this lot was supposed to be created a, as it was when I built, when I built.
Be created.
Okay. And so in the current, springage is sixty feet and we're looking to go to one seventy-five, so I'm just tripling.
So the way you describe your lot, like a hockey stick, that's like a flag stand lot, right?
Yeah.
I like the hockey stick analogy.
I'm just more used to.
And, and not only that, when I looked on the G I S and I looked around my house, just to, I spent some time about, well, time, ten minutes before I came to being tonight, looking at lots around my house, uh, different roads around, there were several lots that would not meet this criteria. Now, I know we're not going backwards, I get that, but, but in looking forwards, there were several lots that people, people have built their house on. And however, however, that, that lot was, was, was surveyed, I, I don't have a clue, but I know that what's there now would not be able to be done if, if it was a situation to where they're doing it, if this is approved. And so to me, going to one or seventy-five feet is, is a bit excessive.
Well, in all fairness, and I, I have checked, but it's been a while. But the house that I live in, and I'm just gonna say for the record, in today's market, if I had to buy my house, I couldn't. The bank wouldn't let me. So, so my house isn't affordable to me today. And I say this with my wife sitting in the room, she knows as well. But when, when, when my house was built in nineteen seventy, my granddaddy bought the property and he gave my parents the lot where my house is. And when he gave it to them, it was real wide at the road and kind of shallow. And my granddaddy decided one day he wanted a carport. So he built it. And at a point, he got to realizing that he had actually built across the line. So he come to my daddy and said, um, of course daddy said, well, yeah. So they resurveyed and moved the property pin up. So now the lot that my house sits on is narrow and deep to allow my granddaddy's garage to be on his property. So I, I think, I think, but from, from pin to pin now is a hundred and sixty feet. So, so my lot would be out of compliance. Not as far as eighty-eight feet, but it's still not a hundred and seventy-five. And I, I don't, I don't have a super strong opinion on a hundred and seventy-five feet road frontage. I think sixty is a little thin. I think it needs to be, be a little more than that. But, but just like that property where I live, we talking about words on piece of paper? And, and all you gotta do is raise your hand to vote and change.
So with, with that being, being said, I mean, um, okay, so we're, more of this purposes, we're doubling the lot size from sixty to, or from thirty thousand to sixty thousand. Or if we just went to a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-five feet off that sixty. And, you know, kind of double and double and that thing.
Well, it would.
Hundred thirty-five does seem a little bit, but, but you can't go sixty. I mean, if you just double the lot size, that means your lot is gonna have to be a whole lot more longer, that'd be even a worse option.
I mean, I just thought about my neighborhood, um. Now, all of us that are on the main road, it's only thirteen hours there, we're just a ten-year-old neighborhood would meet this. But the cul-de-sac nowhere close. I mean, they're actually the largest lots, one is six acres. But it's skinny in the front, you get down the driveway and then it's bands out. So I can see it making sense on the, or, you know, believable on a straight road, but I don't think we could apply this to a cul-de-sac.
Well, the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac is different.
But that would be, that's the whole cul-de-sac.
That's the number two.
I got you. Makes sense.
Okay.
Thirty-five setbacks from ten foot, wouldn't narrow it. So the current frontage is sixty, ten on each side gives you a forty-foot building pad space.
Correct. And it's just a minimum, you know, they can sort of make it wider if they want and, and larger and we see that. I don't know that we ever really have to scrutinize the front of the lot to ensure that it's sixty. But, um, I, I have to ask you in that if we see any that are as large as one seventy-five, especially in like major subdivisions.
Products?
Yeah.
Not for major, certainly not. Um, I mean, for something like mine, or someone cutting off one or two lots.
Yeah.
We'll see like a hundred, maybe a hundred and twenty, something like that, maybe a hundred and seventy-five, but not for majors.
So from the devil, Africa, one of you, one of the developers trying to lay out, now you can read that. In the perfect world, they're all the rectangle blocks and we don't have any hockey sticks or fiddles or banjo blocks. But most of them were done based on where perk sites and well sites were for the most part. If you go all the way to a hundred and seventy-five, you've been limiting the ability of the developer to make, or we're gonna get some really I don't know how to describe it. But, but are you gonna be able to adequately develop the property with a hundred and seventy-five foot? Sixty seems light, but I can see like the hockey stick where you know.
You know, the hockey stick would be a flag on.
What you're talking about, this would, uh, outside of a cul-de-sac, but you know, you cut a road in and you put down these ten lots on each side, that's a, you're, this draft is a hundred and seventy-five feet for every one of those lots.
So they can't go this deep if they got wide.
Yeah, I probably.
I say a hundred.
Seven hundred and something.
I guess it's personal preference, but my thoughts is I'd rather be further away from the road than that is right. I mean, cause that to me is the country of, I go in my backyard, I don't want to see it about my neighbor, but if I'm
Those types.
Close to the road, but not that far back, I don't know, it doesn't feel like, cause I'm hearing the, the car.
It's that one lot.
And you want to put your barn or workshop or something like that in the back, I mean, so if you have that. Probably a compromise.
As going to a two acre lot. If you look at an acre, it's two teen. So we backed that up to a hundred and seventy-five, make a little clearer, so it'd be just, you know, if you had two teen front that'd be two acres, that'd be two acre, acre, two acre deep, an acre wide. So if you went go to a hundred and five, go to a hundred and twenty, that's half acre. And that would put you three quarters of an acre deep.
Me personally, I would be more, I understand sixty foot based on what we're doing with lot sizes being to being not enough. Me around a hundred feet would be where I'd be comfortable at.
So I, I mean, I mean, it's in that range, a hundred, a hundred, you know. Actually, a half acre would be a hundred and ten.
So the sixty-five would change that.
It's on your mind.
Still thinking, I think other folks need to talk a little bit.
Well, we, we're doing some, Stephen and I are doing a research study, I mean, if you go to sixty-two north and look at those lots, they're, they're one acre lots and the road frontage on those is a hundred and fifteen feet. They're all exactly the same. Every one of them. And they're all one acre lots, exactly one acre. And they're how, what are they?
Three hundred and eighty feet.
Three hundred and eighty feet deep. So they're big, long candy bars. They look like they're not, not quite that wide. They're more narrow than that, oh, you know, they're very narrow. But the, there's a reason why they're this way. Well, they conformed to the thirty thousand minimum, well, they're an acre, so they're a little better than the thirty. But they avoided the subdivision ordinance by using highway sixty-two as the, as the street. So they avoid building the road. So they, they, they're not doing anything wrong, they complied with the rule as the rule is. But that's a hundred and fifteen feet wide, a hundred and eighty feet deep. And then they've got two big, massive fifteen acre sixteen, fifteen, almost sixteen acre tracks that are behind all those houses with a little narrow easement seventy foot easement up through between two houses to get to the fifteen acres.
Yeah, which is those flag stand or hockey.
Which is, and there's, there is one hockey stick lot.
Yeah.
This laid in there behind.
Yeah.
Uh, two of those skinny lots. So that's what a hundred and fifteen foot looks like. Now, with sixty-five thousand, it would look a little different.
I'm wanting to talk about.
Do it, it'd be a lot, it'd be deeper, it'd still be a hundred and fifteen feet wide on a public road or an existing street. You know, that's not gonna change the look of them very much. So there's your cadence.
Rodney, what's your thoughts?
Well, I think sixty feet's a little thin. And was a hundred enough? A hundred twenty-five enough? You know, I was the one that started out with five acres on, on, on Big Seventy. I had a progression scale that, that capped at five acres. So, uh, if, I think if this group can come to a consensus that a hundred, a hundred ten, a hundred twenty feet, then we need to vote on it, put this with it, send it down, see what happens.
Is there a way to do that, but kind of protect the hockey stick lots? In those situations, cause that, you know, cause you have a unique situation for cul-de-sac lots. Shouldn't there be some sort of unique?
Probably the most similar feature that the ordinance allows for are exclusive access easements. So you can have a driveway basically run through the furnished lot to access the back lot. So if these regulations were to come into effect, you'd probably have like a double stacking, a more, a more frequent kind of double stacking. Where you've got a road furnished lot and then you've got a lot behind it and there's an exclusive easement, access easement that runs to that.
So then maybe that minimum, if we did agree at one twenty, maybe that minimum one twenty lot would be laid out at one sixty. And forty feet of that would be access easement to the rear maybe.
Well, the access easement would just be, need to be the, what's the, is it twenty feet for exclusive access? Twenty-five. Twenty-five feet for exclusive. But it has to be at least three hundred feet long. Uh, yeah, that's have the main thing that comes up with those.
Yeah.
That people are looking at doing, like, like you said, like a stacked lot, but sometimes the initial lot is not that deep.
Yeah, but if the minimum is an acre and a half, then it's more likely that you're gonna have a lot that's three hundred feet deep.
I guess, I just think you gotta give a little flexibility.
Yeah.
You know. You've given, you've, you've gotta give something, you've taken away something else, you know, you can't you gotta have a compromise in there somewhere.
Hence why I like option C, where we go to a committee to look at it and give a, a developer an option to yeah, present something that would, uh, could be, you know, different than what we're trying to.
Well.
Based on engineering.
There, there's a thing, you know, there's a variance procedure. I mean, you know, not all of it's gonna be perfect. So you, you know, they're gonna draw them out and they're gonna be what they are and there's gonna be something in there that's odd and needs some consideration.
So what's that process look like? Say, say you, you draw it out, say you set on whatever, whatever, whatever road frontage, one or a hundred twenty feet, whatever it is, you have that, that hockey stick lot, that's not gonna work. What is the process for trying to make that work? You mentioned variances. I mean, how, how, how does that work?
They would, they would come here, I suppose, or to the board of adjustment.
You gotta go to the board of adjustment for a variance, but you gotta demonstrate a unique hardship that is peculiar to that situation.
Right.
Uh, simply being unable to comply with the county regulations that are duly adopted and have gone through the process isn't necessarily a unique hardship. There'd have to be something peculiar about the lay of the land or the other lots around it or soils maybe. It's hard to, it's hard to speculate on what that might be, but the general assembly intentionally sets the bar for variance rather high. And it assumes that a local government is going to pass an ordinance that is applicable in ninety-nine point whatever percent of all cases, but for that odd, less than one percent chance, you might need to pursue a variance option. But the bar, the bar for variance approval is, is by design high. So, but your option C from the last draft was less intrusive to that procedure. Correct. It's more of, it's more of, the, the, the planning board review and special permit process would be more of. Hashing out those peculiarities on the front end, rather than appealing for a variance on the back. If that.
That's what I, I, I like, I was attracted to that with C option. Make a motion to put that in with this draft.
We got one more vote tonight, you can just make a motion to bring the whole thing back.
All right, well, I, I do like that C option, because then it does kind of take down situations where. You have to go for variance, uh, it gives a developer an option to. To come through some engineering and present something that, yeah, we can see the, 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 it's reasonable and customary to do something. You know, it's, yeah, it takes it out of. Quick approval from your department, but at least it, it gives a, you know, building an option to. To deal with the situation.
So basically, it's an option for someone to go through a process.
Well, basically, the, so as we talked about in the previous draft version of the subdivision changes, we had a more. Specific breakdown of major subdivision versus minor subdivision, each one had different classifications. So your major subdivision would have been conventional, which is two acres cluster. Which we've talked about the details of that, or hybrid. And the hybrid would neither be two acres or clustered, it would be something in between. In those situations, they would have to procure a special use permit and come before the board. To have it adjudicated and hash out all these details prior to approval. And then you had a minor subdivision, which was the family option, or just the standard minor subdivision for private, private road. Um, so that's my hesitancy with just making a motion to add it in. The hybrid option came because you had the other things, but those other things aren't necessarily there anymore, if we're just looking at the current subdivision.
Yeah.
Especially with the detailed running, plus subdivision, the family option, those types of things.
And I will not make that motion this time.
Most of your city on the county are like forty foot, you know.
You can do a six foot right away from the. Existence of road back to your lot. And most all living institutions require that sixty foot. They used to do thirty, but they don't do that before, they give six, so you'd have that option. To, that you, if you have a piece of property back there in the back, you can get a six foot right away to do that. It would, you know, we'd like to share your topic, but then.
The more we talk about it, the more my mind, I keep going more backwards as opposed to forwards here, uh, be perfectly honest with you. There, there's, there's a lot of little, not everything, not everything is made the same. And there's, there's, there's circumstances to where things need to be done certain ways to make it work. And, cause I, I was at a hundred feet, but I, but I'm going backwards now, I'm not going up, I'm not going up the direction of this, I'm just, uh, running.
I guess to me is just, I think sixty is skinny. How many skinny lots are being made if you're on at least acre plus lots, that's, that's my thoughts. And so it's almost like if we say, why are we almost forcing them to have a short or not as deep lot? That they may want. Uh, maybe that was why, I mean, I don't know, I wish there was a builder in today that could just chime in, but, um. Uh, on what risks of changing would be, but, um. But that's my thoughts, I mean, I think we ought to make sure that we're thinking about the local builders and elements. Making sure we're not gonna impact them in a negative manner by saying we want them to be built not as deep lots. Cause you gotta obviously know that when they make money, they have to put a number of lots in, in an area where they're able to make sense.
Or dissolve, a desirable product.
Yeah. If you think about it, if I move to the county, I wanna make you feel like a county, and if this. If I'm hearing somebody drive by every day, I don't feel like I'm in the county. Especially sixty-two, I'm just thinking about that place. Yeah, but I mean, mo- a lot of lots aren't designed.
Well, we are talking about sixty-five thousand square foot in the rural parts of county that, um.
Right, and I get that part, I mean, I think that part is, you know, definitely a compromise, but I'm just afraid if we adjust. From sixty to one, seventy-five. What is the impact of the? What is the impact of the builder as well as that homeowner that wanna buy a lot, so it feels like the country. Yeah, I think the hundred positive motivation. Like, I think mine is fifty, clear fifty on all sides, but the lot itself is right at three acres. We're on private road, but. My driveway is long, we just get it to the end of that hallway at least. And it, so I can't hear when they ride by.
You don't know what a long driveway is.
Well, you're right.
And you clicked off three or four or five tenths. And that, and you get back to the road, that's another mile.
The hockey put ones like that, it's driveway, matter of fact, the builder got mad and said he won't pay him for it. Cause he had to put so much concrete down to get to his house, but he got seven acres. Uh, but I guess I think about it like that, like, I don't wanna negatively impact. Both parties by adjusting it by, hey, that's sixty-one, that's more than double. Um, yeah, and, and I'm not an expert on that part, so that's where I'm at, I just, I wouldn't wanna say more than double the width. Uh, still the same type of lot, gotta make it water. In an adverse way. So I don't know if I could really go with one seventy-five, not knowing that, and not having any, uh, public, uh. Comments surrounding. Or I would be feel comfortable in that.
If there was a provision for the flag stem lots. To have the sixty foot access. I understand there's a provision for an easement on another property. But I think it's also highly desired to have your driveway on your property, not necessarily an easement or a request from another property owner. If there's a provision for that to be maintained. I think somewhere in the neighborhood of one twenty or so could be a reasonable width per your typical more standard type lot. But I would not wanna preclude someone from a flag stem situation to where they have to request an easement on somebody else.
I'm having a very difficult time voting for something that's, that my own house, my own driveway, piece to go home to, would not be able to work for it, so I, I, I'm, I would not be able to. That's, that's, that's the hang of that, I appreciate.
But now however, however, that is on that existing lot, um. Did you buy that lot from family and that's how it was laid out and made?
It was, it was laid out specifically, it was, it's, it's family land, but it's laid out specifically to, to maintain cow pasture.
Right.
And, and so, and so it was, my, my, my life's centered on besides that cow pasture. And so, it was, it was, it was laid out that way to be sure to maintain and figure that, the real character we're talking about.
Yeah, that's why, you know, so, I, right, exactly, that, it was based on conditions and what. You were trying to basically do homemade, you were homemade engineering, right, when you brought that in. Um, and that's why I like that, that C option somewhere to give you that distinction that, hey, we can do something a little different here. That's why I like that. A variance, like you said, a variance is like, you know, it's tough, man, everybody wants to say no.
But, but even, just, just to, to, just, I know we're kinda run long here, I apologize, but. To the, the, the C scenario where it comes before the planning board, I guess, to make. We have certain criteria we have to look at too, to make those determinations as well, it's just not, I think that looks good, let's, let's do it, there, 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 there is a specific path, we have to go down.
Right, but there is some subjectivity to it, which is why it has to be in line with the spirit, purpose and intent of the rules that you set forward for yourself. Which is why that was a part of the previous subdivision ordinance draft. And the comprehensive plan, and obviously in line with state law. I mean, you don't have a tremendous amount of wiggle room, but you do have some subjectivity in play in the joints. There, and you can, even if something isn't in perfect harmony, you could justify it with a consistency statement, that kind of thing. Whereas with a variance, like I said, it's necessarily a very high bar that's hard to achieve, we actually have a board of adjustment alternate in the, in the house tonight. And we've been through training. Um, and so, like I said, it is, uh, it is detail oriented, it is, um. A nuanced type of procedure, but it's addressing it on the front end as opposed to trying to remedy it on the back end. And I'll make another point too, you guys raised some good, I'm sorry, I know you've been raising your hand for a few minutes. Um, y'all brought up some really good points, made me think about something, so the lot width is going to apply in all situations. Even if somebody is on public water sewer and they can legally get a lot down eight thousand square feet, that eight thousand square foot lot would have to have a hundred and seventy-five square. Was that gonna be your fourth?
I think.
Yeah.
I'd just like to offer the fact that as developer in Rodney, they can test this, no piece of property is alike. And it's getting, it's harder and harder around here to find land that you can make it work. You know, like you said, average, what we do now is acre and a half, minimum an acre anyway, that's why we've been fighting for that. It's hard now anyway, and I think it sounds like you guys are just adding, adding, adding. To make it that much harder, and if that's your goal, I understand that, that's what it seems like. But, you know, we have to go through a process with planning, we go in TRC to get all these, this approved. And I think, I mean, as members of everybody, this committee or somebody in there too, right?
One expertise, one liaison.
So it just seems like it's, there's stuff to keep adding, make it that much harder, um.
In response to what you're saying. From being on the developer side before, the goal of the developer is to maximize the use of the land. And get as much lot usage with the least amount of development cost, i.e. roads and non-paying back. So they're gonna want the flexibility of having. Because there may be, as she says, it's not gonna all be rectangular shaped, it's just not. Due to a lot of different factors. The second piece that you brought up is the builder. As a builder, there are a lot of people that don't understand. That you can't build the fifteen hundred square foot house on every lot and be the same. If you have a sixty foot road frontage with a three hundred foot driveway, your house is gonna cost more, because your driveway is gonna cost more. The builders, in my opinion, are not gonna want a sixty foot front. Because then that limits with your setbacks, where your building path's gonna be. And where your well and your septic fields are gonna be.
So meaning like David won't come with money?
They are probably gonna shoot for wire. Depending on the lay of the land, that they're gonna want to have the flexibility to do stuff like the hockey. And the builders will yield to the best use of their dollars. So if they have the availability to put the house in the back, they're not going to, because nobody's gonna wanna pay. Thirty, forty thousand dollars to put a three hundred foot driveway, you know, because it doesn't up your costs for square foot. And that's what's the market. That most people don't understand, it would be really nice, I, I'm sure y'all would love. A square piece of property and it all work with one road, cul-de-sac, everything, but I think that your building community. Is going to build to the best practices, and your developing communities aren't the same. And how do you give them the mechanism to work the size of this lot, and he brought up an excellent point. You're not gonna be able to have eight thousand square foot lot, you're just, they won't be building.
And another thing, Ian sent me a quick message and pointed this out under the subsection six there for corner lots. It says we've got an extra width of twenty percent of the average lot width if it's a subdivision, but no corner lots will be required to exceed. A hundred feet in width. Um, so it does require an extra width there, and then that, if that stays at a hundred, that would provide a conflict in the ordinance, so we need to be ironed out. In some way, so hat tip to Ian for sending me that note.
So could it match it in, in state compliance?
Well, we would just need to go through, i- if we're gonna tinker with the lot width, we would just need to go through and make sure that all those little provisions are uniform. Make, they make sense with each other.
All right, so, um, right below the corner lot, this, this where the verbiage.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so it's the forty percent, that's not underlying, that already.
That's already there.
Yeah, so.
Lot width and, lot width shall be no less than twenty percent of lot depth, but no lot shall be required to be more than a hundred and fifty feet in width. So there again, might be a conflict if we have a hundred and seventy-five foot front of your apartment.
Yeah, and so that, they already kind of. So forty percent. Of the, of the width versus the depth, right, means that already kind of. Kinda give you what your minimum is gonna have to be anyway.
It does, doesn't it?
It really does. Yeah, cause I think initially when you're thirty thousand square feet, well, then, okay, then you put your size of thirty thousand square feet, you're right, da, 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 right. Map, but now you're going this much, you're already gonna get, you know. Think that already dictates it. And that's a part of the existing ones right now.
That's correct.
Maybe the one seventy-five or sixty or all that goes away, it's forty percent of the, the depth, width of the depth.
The current language.
Yeah, the current language. Uh, I know, I mean, we've been known, I'm from Florida, was a home builder down there, what we always had was ten percent or, or setbacks, for example. The rule down there, Pasco County, Florida, was ten percent of lot width. So your setback, you had a hundred and fifty foot width. If you had a hundred foot, it was ten feet. If you had two hundred feet, it was twenty feet. So it was always based on, our setbacks was, was based on a percentage of the lot. And here you're really, you're already forty percent is telling you what your width can be versus your depth.
Sure.
Yeah.
Ian, do you wanna?
That's the very next line in that section.
Which section?
That width and depth section.
Oh, yeah, you're exactly right, lots over one acre are exempt from the standard. So unless that's addressed.
Forty percent in there.
Under section G for lots.
Yeah, I was seeing it.
We're talking about item.
Seven. If that's your measure, you can do away with the other divisions. Can do away with the one acre standard. Delete that language and just use the forty percent number. That allows a lot of flexibility. Y'all see what I'm talking about? If you get us that width and depth, if you eliminate the language of the one acre language. The, the, eliminate, just delete that, leave the forty percent. In there as you.
Eliminate, eliminate the one acre exemption.
Right, and, and basically eliminate the entire. Item, item one, which is street frontage, just get rid of that. And just use width and depth up there in that other definition at forty percent. Of the depth. It, it gives you much more flexibility. As a, as a developer, you've got a lot of room to wiggle. Was that in a motion?
Well. I've never been a big fan of the way that that's written out to say, shall be no less than forty percent of lot depth. But not required to be more than a hundred fifty feet, it's kind of like going upside down and backwards to get where it wants to go. I would prefer if that's gonna be amended to say, to have specific numbers, to say. You know, what, what I've dealt with in the past is, um, we had a frontage of fifty and then a measurement of one twenty-five at the building site. Uh, and that was just very clear and straightforward, and that's similar to the other proposal for the cul-de-sac width, for example, so. Um, it hurts my brain a little bit to kind of do fractional math on that type of thing. Thankfully Ian handles all of our subdivisions, but, um, I think you're right. I think that, that, since that's already in there, they may not be necessary to have a caveat of a hundred and seventy five feet uh, lock with at the brunch. But that would have to be addressed for under section G there for number one and number seven. And I suppose number two. Sack. And this, but there's a five, five hundred, hundred and, or whatever you want to be. We need to come up with.
For what it hurts, but if this, if you do that, then, or even one seventy five or one twenty five or whatever, eighty or whatever it ends up being, you kind of, this is across the board, even for eight thousand square foot lot.
That's correct, yeah.
And see, that, that, that just doesn't make sense. I can't.
That's why I'm saying the forty percent makes more sense.
So then.
Right.
It's gonna be stopped at sixty foot wide.
If you. Yeah, well, the one, the, 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 the recent large one that we reviewed late last year, the landing of Summer Haven, we literally went through every single one of those hundred and something lots and made sure at the verbiage, every single one was sixty feet. And some came in the initial proposals like fifty nine point two six or whatever, and I had to go back and say, dear developer, you know, lot twenty eight here is not quite sixty feet, as they would scooch the line over just a little bit. Under this scenario, with it being a hundred and seventy five, I don't even sure how they would, how they would make that work.
Can you, um, can you differentiate between what we're, we're, we're talking about is septic and sewer lots, not uh, or septic and well lots, not sewer and, and city work, right?
Sure, yeah.
Can you, if it went, can you differentiate that between just those sixty five thousand?
I think you could, you could have a general term, some, a general statement somewhere in it that says these lot, uh, width and depth standards shall not be applicable to or shall only be applicable to well and septic lots, or you could tailor it, and here in your in your chart, you go further and say the corresponding width here is gonna be X, corresponding width there is gonna be Y. I think you can do it a few different ways. If you, if you want to.
So you were saying the community and public water subject, all of these three would have a minimum red frontage of sixty foot. I'm just.
That's correct, yes, they currently be.
And then we could decide lots that have septic system and well, say they have hundred foot, no. Again, that's an example, I'm just putting a number on. Would be another way to.
There will be another way to address it, and then community, public water and septic systems, twenty thousand square foot lots should have seventy five. And then public sewer and wells, fifty hypotheticals. Yeah, community water through a twenty five, again, you know, it's hypothetical, you, you could tailor it that way. If you wanted to, you don't have to address lot width at all. I think that might be the better path right now.
Leave it at all from, all together.
As it is.
Leave it as it is, which is gonna be, that's caveat underneath that forty percent.
Yeah.
Which is the current. And leave that as it is, and see what happens.
You're talking about leave this, take the one seventy five out, leave it at sixty?
Well, take sixty out too, I think.
Leave it as written, but then remember the other piece that doesn't apply to one of them. Wouldn't have to adjust that to one point five. And that was what.
You have to change it to sixty five down.
Yeah. Well, you wouldn't, you would, it would be set by
The forty percent.
A forty percent.
But if I want to set all my lots to be twenty, and you know, I mean, I could mathematically play the numbers. I think they need to have something.
That's what you're saying, if you would like to have a.
I think it would be easier to determine. If you, in order to say it's how it is, we'll work with. That's right, yeah. I'd just like to have a straight teller number. Um, if the desire is to preserve some flexibility so that you have the hockey sitting lots, uh, and you want to have to play there, you could tailor it to where, um, the width would just be as wide as the easement would otherwise be to accommodate that, twenty five feet for the exclusive access season, or fifty feet in other situations, you know, sixty feet is what it is now, and it's not that far off. So. Yeah, cause like maybe we've circled back around the original.
Yeah.
I'm getting ready to say something, Amy, and I want you to verify what I'm saying is right or not.
Okay.
The reason that we've got a planning board. The reason that the county has inspectors. The reason that this whole group exists is because at a point, somebody didn't do right. Now, it, it, it's ugly when you say that, but at the end of the day, if everybody always done their job as if they were working for their own mother and she were the, standing there watching do it, we wouldn't be. Is that, is that a right statement or is that a wrong statement?
Well, you got speed limits.
That's why we have a whole section, we can't really code under pools and suction on. Yep.
So, so we need to keep in mind that the perfect piece of property where the land lays right, everything works, and on and on and on and on and on. That ain't the one we're, we're working towards. We're working for the one that don't work. And some just don't work. And when it don't work, that's just the way it is. If grandpa left you in his wheel, ten acres of land, and there's not a perk site on it.
Sorry.
You, you know, a- as bad as it is, that's just the way it is. So in an effort to protect the county, we've got to, in an effort to protect the county, we need to do this work correctly. The, the point has kind of been made that all of the good sites have already been built on. Well, you know what? If they've already been built out, they're built out. If you want to go to the second tier or the third tier, it's just gonna take no work. And it is not our job as a planning board nor the county's job to come in here and fix it so it does take what's required to make wrong right. Does, 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 do y'all, do y'all follow me?
I did.
Am I, am I so far out?
You don't need to make it easier than it already has been.
Which some folks might say is part of the problem we're dealing with now is it's been too easy.
Makes sense.
Okay. Well, I'm getting down off my soapbox.
We don't want to make it too hard.
Well, you don't want to make it too hard.
So there's, there's gotta be a balance.
There needs to be a balance.
To figure out what would that sound?
All right, so we, we've, we've come, we've come to the conclusion though that forty percent rule really is not for the plans department, or maybe if we're figuring these, these lots out, maybe forty percent rule needs to go. So, and we need to come up with firm numbers. Like for a sixty five thousand square foot lot, we need to say a hundred and twenty feet. For a twenty thousand square foot lot, might be eight, eighty feet. Um, I think you'd learn from those numbers, um, eight, eight thousand square foot, sixty feet, let me tear that up and marry it to the lot sizes that we have right here.
I think the forty percent ratio makes it more universally applicable. It's just basing the length and the width together for standard rectangle. I think if you go to chart out specific widths for specific depths or street frontages, you're gonna have a pretty long list to cover every integer in every decimal sheet you go down.
I think we're looking at too much information. Cause in the non watershed area, we're only talking about well and septic on a single lot with a single dwelling unit. So if there's a community, public water, community septic, or whatever, that's it, that, we ain't talking about that.
But with lots width, you are.
Yeah, lot width.
Apply across the board regardless of the size of the lot.
Okay, well, if we do anything with lot width, that motion needs to include well and septic, single dwelling lots only. And exempted from all that other stuff, because this, this, that.
Well, then I think they need to have standards.
But then you have to have numbers for all those other.
Well, don't we already have numbers in place?
Well, we have a calculation of forty percent, the width being uh, equal, uh, what is it again?
Forty percent of the light depth.
Okay, well, if it hadn't been a problem up till the night, it shouldn't be a problem in the morning. If that needs addressed, then that needs to be put on the next meeting agenda.
I don't think that that language, the, the forty percent calculation was in the draft that we brought forward last time. In an effort to clarify, right?
Right.
Cause typically we look, Ian, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, you handle most of these, we look to make sure they've got sixty foot in the frontage. And unless there's something really peculiar, we don't really pay attention to that.
Yeah, it's not something that's generally scrutinized because again, most lots will kind of fall into that.
Right.
Naturally, without the frontage and how they're, how they're built.
Right.
Um, if it's like a really, really oddly shaped lot, then sure, something will, will look at, pick them.
Yeah.
Or something like that, but yeah.
But sometimes they're seeking to do the layout that you're talking about, it's sixty feet here, and then run up and then the lot, they widens out so that they don't have to do the easement through the frontage lot or whatever it's gonna be.
Yes, sir. We, 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 we've all agreed that we want raise lot sized acre. So we're increasing it. No. It stands to reason that we need to increase the lot they road frontage by the same way, because your lots are bigger. If you have a sixty foot, you have a six foot, if you do a six foot in a front here, then you're gonna be three hundred foot back here. So why would it not be to make it? You'd have to bring it up to the same sizes. Hundred and ten, hundred and twenty in the front, so that your lots can be somewhat uniform, they don't have, they can go out bigger. But I would say that you, we need to hit to sixty foot, it's just too narrow.
In, in a perfect world, that would work, but this is, if you look at the, the GS IS map and how those lots, different shapes, size and stuff, it's just not a perfect world, you could think that it's just gonna all fall in that way. And so, um, just, just, just simply double, just simply double.
So there, there's a distinction to be made between road frontage and lot width.
Correct.
They're two different things, so you can't really have one govern the other.
Right.
And, and, and be, and it, in my opinion, be reasonable.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm looking at two sixteen acre lots with seventy foot road frontage for a strip of about four hundred and eighty feet, and then they widen out to fifteen, eleven hundred feet to sixteen acres. And that's, to me, that's a reasonable lot, because you get your own, your own property.
Get a private driveway.
To the right of.
You get sixteen acres back there, buddy, so.
To me, I like the flexibility of saying up too, because it gives that, you know, I think the, the starting minimum is sixty, so you don't want any narrower than that. But to give that flexibility up to a certain point, even if it's say, even if the up to is one seventy five or not to see, you know, requiring by having be more than one seventy five, it doesn't hold the builder to making sure that, all right, if you're gonna put a three acre lot, it has to be one seventy five. It's saying that basically if you do a three acre lot, it has to be up to one seventy five, but but gives them that flexibility, it may be a hundred. It may, because I don't know, maybe the builder might not want to have a hundred and seventy five foot wide, maybe they want more depth, but this kind of restricts them there, because if we change that one, that's the only thing, we, the current one is, it has to be at least sixty foot wide.
Right.
But the reality is, you're larger as a lot. It won't. That will be less likely to be sixty foot than, um, than the other lots that are smaller.
Just provide you the flexibility.
Right.
In the, in the septic, that it's need, needs to based, based on the, the property itself.
Cause I mean, we, we can use the scenario a minute ago, where we talked about the houses that were shown to us in the pictures, I remember seeing that, that was at a hundred and something.
Hundred and fifty.
And then the opinions of a lot, that was too small. So.
I think, I think the case there in that scenario isn't necessarily the problem of lot width or street frontage. I think the problem is the back to back to back.
Correct.
The repetitive.
Yeah.
And I think had, if all those lots had one main entrance to a road, two hundred or three hundred feet off of the main right of way, and they had their own access internal with one main access to the right of way, I think that'd be a much better situation.
It would be.
And then we wouldn't so much worry about how wide or how deep the lot is.
But you gotta understand, the reason they did that was to save, save cost and get around a subdivision.
Back to our point earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So if you just leave it sixty, not all of them are gonna be sixty.
Right.
But sixty gives you flexibility to have the flag stand, the flag lot, but the average of them is gonna be
More.
More than sixties, a hundred to a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty, because they're bigger, they're a sixty five thousand square foot lot now.
Right. I think that.
Thirty thousand.
Paragraph with the forty percent rule is fine if you just increase that over one acre minimum to match your sixty five thousand square foot minimum that you've got.
Right, change the one acre to sixty five thousand.
And color.
Leave the sixty foot in the other, eliminate the one seventy five.
Mm-hmm.
You make that motion?
I'm making that a motion.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to amend the draft.
Yeah, I can tell you, the motion is to eliminate the one hundred and seventy five, leave it at sixty feet for frontage. That's, that's first part of it. Second part is in, in item number seven, to eliminate.
Under section G for lots.
Right. The one acre language and change that to over sixty five thousand square feet.
And then take off that cul-de-sac minimum width criteria.
That last sentence.
Cause that was in addition.
But I mean, that last added sentence, I mean, I'm fine.
That doesn't bother me as much, because that's at the building side.
That's why I was.
That's where you're back in the lot. Right.
Basically where the side of your house would sit.
So Mr. Chairman, that's my motion.
Second to that.
Okay, does everybody hear it? Now we didn't talk about enough, I'm not gonna repeat. But we are gonna discuss it, so now if you time.
All right, so forty percent stays in, sixty five thousand uh, replaces the one acre, everything else goes away. But now we're having to be, um, I have a union force. I'm getting nervous. Sixty foot versus the forty percent, I mean, all right, then at this point, I still look at that.
We, we would still seek to ensure that lots less than sixty five thousand square feet have a frontage of sixty feet. And if we needed to do the calculation to make sure that it was forty percent of the depth.
Right, if you do the forty percent and it comes up, well, it needs to be eighty five feet.
Right.
Maybe, and then they're gonna kick back to the developer.
Right, you leave that forty percent and it's gonna come up eighty two feet.
Yeah.
But if that lot is sixty five thousand and one square foot in size, and that.
And it's exempt.
Yeah. Right, and then the forty percent.
I, I say it needs to be more than two acres. I, I say it needs to be more than two acres is exempt. As opposed to sixty five thousand feet. Cause when you go to flatten it out, you know, moving a property line an inch will come up with, you know, some feet from here to there. And all you gotta do is move your property line one inch. And that makes it exempt from the, oh, that's just, just a thought.
I'll amend my motion to change the sixty five thousand to eighty thousand or eighty.
Ninety thousand.
Two acres, just make it two acres. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, Bonanza's getting ready, come on, and I gotta get home.
Okay. All right, so that's a new point over two acres.
Correct.
Right. Thank you for that.
Forty percent rule going away at two acres.
Um, yes.
Matt, how you do on that?
This, it feels like a lot of.
He feels sleeping now.
Yeah, that's why you got Ian and then now you got another guy.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta help him out, that's right. And this is just the draft. This is just the draft.
And Matt may go back and say, we crazy and change it up.
We're talking about the draft. We voted right now to accept all three. That means that's what you're gonna at some point present to the county commissioner.
If we vote on draft, we pass it.
Correct, cause now we're voting on draft pieces.
Wait a minute, we got, we got a motion on the floor. I'm calling the question, chairman.
Okay, all right. Everybody understand, we're voting on changing to two acres. That, that.
And, and leaving the sixty feet.
Sixty feet stays in there and over two acres.
Motion. Seventy five stays for the, the width of the cul-de-sac lot at the.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Yep. You got all that, Mr. Planner?
With them.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote. Okay. Now.
Now, may I make a motion that we accept all three of these draft changes into what we want to present?
I have to say.
We got a address number six.
Yeah, we need to get to that little sound down.
We got a, a number six.
There's one, one more, number six, I think.
That the corner lots.
Corner lots on it. Would require sixteen one hundred.
Is that corner lots with adult establishments on.
That's existing, I can remember right now, right, that's existing. I think that's, which, that's not a change. You really wanna confuse it now.
My people are misleading because the word corner lots is underlined, well, that just hasn't.
Twenty, twenty six.
Correct.
Okay, so that does need to be addressed.
Yes.
I was.
G two, what were the change, uh, minimum, uh, width, uh, for a cul-de-sac lot going from forty to twenty six feet. That's the only remaining pending change.
I make a motion for the twenty six feet.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second on two for the twenty six feet for cul-de-sac, and that's on a cord.
Measured along the cord.
Not a straight line.
No, the cord is a straight line. The cord is a straight line, the cord is not the arc link. The arc link is along the curve, the cord is a straight point.
A cord is a straight. Oh, when you pull a cord, that's point to point.
Yeah.
It doesn't follow the curve of the street.
Well, then we probably need to change that.
You wanna change.
The impression of the cord was the.
Arc link, no, that's the arc link.
Arc link.
The cord is measured from where the arc begins to where the arc, straight line to where the arc ends. Yeah.
Well, wouldn't it be fair for it to be measured around the arc?
If you have, if you do it along the cord length, you're gonna force the arc length to be longer.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. So, so, so if you wanted, if you wanted it to be
A bigger.
A longer, a bigger curvature of right of way, then you would, it, but you would just increase the cord length.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause the shortest distance between two points is straight line.
So twenty six on the cord is gonna be a longer.
Arc link.
Arc link.
Yeah.
Uh, my motion stands.
Yeah.
It's, it's the cord.
And I have a second.
All right, I have unreadiness.
You got what?
Unreadiness or question or comment.
Okay.
Why are we changing that? I don't understand the six foot difference.
And is it gonna be six foot based on how it's being measured now as opposed to how it was being measured previously?
Currently, it doesn't really give us guidance, whether it's the arc.
We didn't have that in there.
No, it doesn't really say, it says twenty feet, but it doesn't.
It says at the street right of way, so if you're measuring at the street right of way, in my opinion, I would interpret that as measuring along the curve of the right of way. Cause the curve, the circle in the cul-de-sac, that is the right of way.
So we, I guess it's previous question, so, so why are we adding six feet to what was that, though, we were down?
I'm assuming it'd make it bigger.
The.
But that's basically around this table to you.
Pulling well back.
I'm just wondering.
You talking about what you're adding to it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you probably, probably add it from here to the, to the corner of it there, that's about six feet.
Right, so that's what I was wondering, like, if there was a rationale behind.
Okay, so, so in a big subdivision, more than, what, what's, what's the major, more than fifteen?
More than fifteen lots.
Okay, so, so when you get in a big subdivisions, your road by DOT requirement's gotta be twenty six feet wide. Or they've got to have some kind of pullouts and it, it, it's twenty six feet wide. So, so now, if you're in a big subdivision, and this is what we're planning, well, we, this, we, we're about three houses. When you come down there.
This applies to all subdivisions, even if it's a single lot.
We're preparing for. We're getting ready for. So, so if you got this hundred house subdivision, and you come down there, when you come out of the, the cul-de-sac in an emergency, you got the same road birth that you've had coming. You don't find yourself getting bottlenecked down with a fire truck in the middle of nine, January, when it's ice. You got the same road width, that's the logic behind it. Is it right or wrong? I can't answer that, but I can tell you where it comes from. If that makes sense.
It does. There's always that, that interjection, but.
Right. I've counted on.
That's when I read that, I see that, maybe because I don't understand along the cord, what the difference is today.
Cord would be if I put a string on a pin right here and pull it straight to you.
Okay.
And you hold the other end of the string, that's the cord, it's a straight line.
So then.
Then if it's a cul-de-sac and we're the two strings, the curve goes that way, it curves.
We're just going across.
We're going across the middle of this curve.
Versus a skinnier.
That's what that means.
Okay, I got you.
Does that help you?
It does, a whole lot, yep, actually a whole lot, look at you.
So, so what is the distance around the arc in that right there?
In this, I don't know, it depends on the radius and the angle of the, uh, that you pull it on the, along the curve.
Mm-hmm, now we get into G M, we get to lake that, yeah.
Yeah, I could draw in CAD and tell you tomorrow.
Okay.
If you really want.
Don't wanna report unless it's.
Well, okay, so in the standard cul-de-sac ninety feet.
Uh, I can't remember. It's on what the fire thing and stuff is.
It's ninety six feet diameter, I believe, for the fire standards.
Yeah, that's right.
Ninety six feet. Okay, so it wouldn't be a whole lot of trouble to plug in what the distance around.
Yeah, at twenty six, all you're really doing is just spacing out your lot.
You just make them a little bit longer.
But the circle's gonna remain the same size.
Circle's the same size.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I actually thought it was in the arc, I didn't realize it was a straight line across each.
Yeah.
Or the cord.
Well, is it possible that in a ninety six foot cul-de-sac, you could lose six feet in the arc?
I guess, kinda depends on how your lots are situated. I mean, the arc's gonna stay the same no matter what, if it's ninety six foot.
I understand that, but if you start over here and measure around it.
Yeah, like instead, instead of setting your lot lines, your pins at twenty foot intervals.
Yeah.
You would just set them at whatever that core distance is, at twenty six feet. And it would have to, whatever it translates back to on the curve.
But, but at any point in that arc, if you put two pins and you measure twenty six feet like this, is it possible that those two pins could be twenty feet apart? In a ninety six foot cul-de-sac?
Now, they'd be further. They'd be further apart.
Bottom line is. More than twenty feet.
It would be.
Property pin to property pin on a straight line, it's going twenty feet, twenty six feet.
Yeah, but the arc is gonna be longer.
Whatever, whatever the lot layout.
I don't know how much longer, but it'll be further around the circle. In the tobacco field.
I can draw it up.
And, and look, in the cornfield or the tobacco field, the curve rose always longer than a straight road.
So, all right, so here's you.
Always.
So my question is, if you put a pin here, put a pin here. And twenty feet in that straight line, right?
Well, as it's written, it would be twenty six.
Twenty six feet by the.
Yeah, that satisfies my read, my readiness.
But it was twenty. Now we're changed.
Line, maybe.
No, it was measured, previously it was measured on arc. So you're changing the methodology, you're changing the distance and the methodology in which.
Can, correct.
You're changing the pieces.
So in it, if, if this was twenty feet.
Mm-hmm.
Could that arc be twenty six? If this is.
If that's twenty and twenty, I see what you're saying.
Again, I would have to know the radius.
I don't think you'd have to have, you'd have to have.
Cause I don't, I mean, there's a formula for it, but I don't.
Well, and I don't know what formula is either, I just.
Little J is in trouble. And I gotta get home, make sure he gets out of there.
All right, okay, so we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Yep.
The motion is to keep the twenty six foot measured at the cord in the cul-de-sac.
So now, it's, it's only motion on is twenty six feet at the cord in cul-de-sac.
That's correct.
We've done voted on the sixty five.
Yeah, we did that a long time.
Okay, all right, okay, I'll just get back on track, all right, okay.
You spread your cock back out out there.
Question has been called for, so there's no further discussion. All in favor, aye? Aye. Vote. Okay.
Now, Bill.
Now, I'd like to make a motion that we accept all four of these roads and amendments and present to the county commissioner.
Okay. So, so now the question is, do we want to send what we've done tonight to the county commissioner? Is any question, any discussion?
Send, send it.
Send this.
In itself.
Yes, we're, we're sending six point nine in itself, not part of the U D O, that had been discussed a while back.
Okay.
This is purely the standalone six point nine change. The rest of the amendments that we're going through would have come later on as part of a larger U D O package, that's correct.
Yeah. Second.
All right, so we got a motion and a second on that.
But now I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Can he run through everything we've done tonight? It's been a long day. Like he said, we'll all go this after nine o'clock. All right, there's sixty five thousand lots, right?
Sixty five thousand.
Sixty feet road front. Which stays.
And sixty five on the balance of water.
Sixty five and, and one acre, or no, two acres on. Bridge.
Eighteen, that's not true. Acre and a half.
Acre and a half.
Yep.
Well, sixty five thousand.
So basically, my balance of water.
Twenty six, twenty six.
Technically, that's not an acre.
On the Curtis.
No, yes.
Or is it on the pole?
He's doing his own review. Okay.
All right, I have one question before we take that.
Yes, sir.
Section H, this is for. Section H on the back. There it is. Cools. Should that also be paid from twenty to twenty six?
Where are we at?
Section H is building setback lines.
H is utilities. I'm. Where y'all at? What page are y'all?
Section H, building setback lines.
Oh, I see.
So basically, that's fine, wherever the, uh, right of way line is, it's thirty feet back from that.
Oh, and I'll come up, but it's gonna run into twenty feet at the street right of way line. And sixty feet, I know the sixty left.
I don't see that.
Very top of the page.
There you go. Come out down here.
Oh, very, very top of the page. It has stars by it, so probably.
The caveat's under the, under the building setback, you know, this table, so it says cul-de-sac lot have minimum percentage of at the street right of way line. And a minimum width of sixty feet. Which is thirty feet from the right of way lines. So if, if you measure the cord, yeah, I had twenty six, then the frontage along the arc would necessarily be more than.
More than that anywhere thing.
It would.
Cause the curve would be more.
Your arc length is always gonna be longer than the cord length.
Yeah, so we, yeah, I just saw that twenty.
Curve.
Saw that we changed it, make sure we didn't miss anything before we sent it.
No, it's a good observation too, cause these changes do have ripple effects in other, other terms in the ordinance.
That's it, I think.
All right.
I'll bring the camera.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. We talked about it, is everybody clear what we're doing? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote. All right, so just for clarification, we've talked tonight about a lot of numbers. And one number we've talked about a lot is sixty five thousand square feet. Another word that we've used is acre and a half. Now, an acre and a half is sixty five thousand, three hundred and forty square feet. So in conversation, when you talk to people and they say, I can't believe y'all moved these things acre and a half, we did. Moved sixty five thousand feet, now he's close. But the three hundred and forty feet difference in what we've done and an acre and a half, I didn't wanna clarify that. Anybody got any questions about that?
No, sure. Now, what would that depth be based on a forty percent lot width?
About that much. Or just a smidge left, make.
I got one I need to add, and that is that, uh, general statute one sixty D dash six oh four D requires a planned consistency statement for any, uh, proposed amendments to the ordinance, so, um, this is a little bit of a last minute operation here. Um, I did have a, a draft consistency statement for your last meeting, but obviously that revision was not adopted, so I'm gonna borrow from that, I'll just read it, you guys can debate it and see how you feel. So what I have here is, we find that this subdivision ordinance amendment is consistent with the following elements, county land development plan, land use and agricultural policy recommendations. Recommendation two point one encourages increasing lot size based on, uh, ins, I'm sorry. Increasing base lot size requirements and improving open space preservation in new developments. And recommendation number three encourages reducing the development pressure in rural and agricultural areas. One of them I crossed out, cause it's not really applicable to that, but that's kind of a modified version of the consistency statement. Like I said, you're going to normally pass this recommendation on the condition you have to have consistency.
Move to adopt.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote. Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
I have one other thing.
Oh.
Oh, man.
I have one thing.
Almost.
Next month, I'd like for the rest of you to understand we have a dress code, these two gentlemen and I basically understood it this month that we all had to be uniform in our decor. So, next month, y'all need to try to guess, guess what color we're gonna wear.
I walked by a Minneapolis Moline tractor today, but not enough yellow rubbed off to make my shirt on, so I'm sorry about that.
Anyway, yes, got a question.
I just wanna thank you, the house, this is like changing carpet in a Baptist church, it wasn't me really getting involved, because it's not like signature what it's always been, so it takes a lot of courage, it's always been the hottest committee I've felt, because we're at a real point where we're like at a crossroads, and we gotta make some big decisions, and everybody's gotta work together. So when you do bring this to us, I just ask you, can you please explain it to all of us like we're in the third grade? Because you guys are such pros. I was, I, I told somebody, I said, everybody in your audience is smart. You guys are smart. That makes such a great meeting. Even they make a difference. It's still, you're working for the best of the county. And, um, I, I'm just so thankful that you all are on the background, which is so crucial. It really is. And I'll say, when you do come present this, don't go out of town. I want you to all be here, not with a bag over you. You're gonna like the unknown planning board member, but I really appreciate it because I would love to recognize you because, um. These committees make our government work and it's really on your shoulders. And, um, there's always the armchair quarterbacks that know everything and they never show up for anything. So I can't thank you enough for taking your nights to come here. And it's just so important that this is what makes Alumance County really great. I was with, it was with you and you. I started my day with these people and I'm gonna finish it. But we were talking about farms today, which is just as crucial. We just have to keep that balance. And I really want to grow, but I don't want to outgrow. And so, um, you know, we're chasing schools now because we're getting so near capacity for everything. And our kids are our future and we have to really make sure they have everything that they need because they're gonna take care of us old people one day. And I may not know my name, but I don't know if I don't get fed. So it's just very important that we just do it right and really be willing to. And I told Rodney, I talked to him the other day about nothing. I said, I'm just so proud of you guys because you are really working together because it does give, take, give and take. Cause if you get divided, you can just watch the bees at night and see what that looks like. So, uh, thank you so much. I, I appreciate it. Girl power. Yeah.
Well, I would like to just say, myself, and I think the rest of us would say it as well. We appreciate you as a commissioner being here to hear this debate and understand what it takes to get to where we are right now. And we hope that we'll get support from the five commissioners to see this through.
Like you're building a county.
That's right. But thank you for being here.
So we've got a motion in six seconds to adjourn.
Second, if it hasn't been a second, man, I'll do it.
Yeah, seven seconds now. All in favor?
All those opposed, y'all stay here.